I will now call this regular meeting of the Coralville City Council to order. It is, I'm sorry, it is a special meeting of the Coralville City Council to order on January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The first order of business that we have this evening is to swear in the mayor and our new council member, Rich Vogelzang. So I will go first.
Okay, raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
I'm Megan Foster.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of mayor.
Discharge all the duties of the office of mayor.
Of the city of Correville.
Of the city of Correville.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law. Thank you.
Raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
Hi, Rich Vogelzang.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of the office of city council member.
Discharge all the duties of the city council.
In the city of Correville.
In the city of Correville.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Now that that is taken care of, could I have the roll call, please?
Knutson?
Here.
Vogelzang?
Here.
Nguyen?
Present.
Peterson?
Goodrich.
All council members except Councilmember Peterson are present. He is traveling for work this evening, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city attorney, the city administrator, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Knutson. Could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Nguyen. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Item number five, I have a proclamation for Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month. Whereas human trafficking is the use of force, fraud, or coercion to compel a person into commercial sex acts or labor services against their will. Exploitation of a minor for commercial sex is human trafficking regardless of whether any form of force, fraud, or coercion is used. And whereas one of the world's fastest-growing crimes is the buying and selling of people whose growth has been accelerated in recent years due to an increase in other social injustices such as abuse, domestic violence, racism, stigmatism, and more. Communities in rural Iowa are seeing an increase in the number of children victimized by labor trafficking, and especially children coming to the United States from Central America. And whereas there is a large disparity between the number of persons victimized by this horrific crime and the number of persons prosecuted as offenders, with more than six hundred and sixty-one victims receiving services in Iowa's direct service programs in two thousand and twenty-two, and only three individuals being convicted in Iowa's federal courts for human trafficking, and four in Iowa's state appellate courts. And whereas even though awareness for this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to be missed and to go vastly unreported. And whereas every business, community organization, faith community, family, and individual can make a difference by working to protect the vulnerable within their sphere of influence, by addressing the problem of internet sex trafficking, choosing products that are not made by forced labor, and by becoming more aware of the problem and possible solutions. Whereas the city of Correville joins Chains Interrupted in their dedication to providing community outreach and education, legislative advocacy, training, promotion of services to survivors of human trafficking, and collaboration with law enforcement. Now therefore, I, Megan Foster, mayor of Correville, do hereby proclaim January two thousand and twenty-three to be Human Trafficking Prevention and Awareness Month, and encourage all of our citizens to become more informed on this growing problem, to be vigilant, and report suspicious activity, and to work towards solutions to end trafficking in all of its forms for our community. For assistance with this, reach out to Chains Interrupted at three one nine three six four zero two two two. If you see something that doesn't look right, reach out to the National Human Trafficking Hotline at eight 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 three seven three seven eight eight eight. Signed on the sixteenth day of January, Megan Foster, Mayor. Okay, and we have some members of the organization here to receive the proclamation. Would you like to step up to the mic, state your name, and say a few words?
Good evening. My name is Teresa Davidson, and I'm the CEO of Chains Interrupted, and I want to just thank everyone who came out in this bitter cold for this. I wonder why National Human Trafficking Awareness Month has to be in January? But thank you very much, Mayor Foster, and all the city council members. Thank you for the important work that you do for our community. Thank you for caring about this issue that destroys the physical, the mental, emotional, and spiritual health of those victimized. Human trafficking can happen to anyone. Every single person in this room fits the profile of a victim. We all fit the profile of a buyer and a trafficker. However, traffickers do tend to target those with certain vulnerabilities, especially those who are young. They target desperation, which many of the youth in our community feel right now, whether they are facing abuse at home, bullying at school, blackmail for a photo or video they sent, economic hardships, or just feeling desperate to be a part of something bigger than themselves and are promised an adventure that turns into something that they weren't expecting. As a community, we need to be aware of all parts of this heinous crime. Parents, guardians, teachers, coaches, mentors, and more, we all need to be aware of how to prevent children from falling victim to this and signs to watch for if they do. Those on the front lines need to be aware of the signs their clients may exhibit when involved in trafficking. It's going to take multiple systems in our community working together to prevent this, free someone trapped in this, and support those who experienced human trafficking to restore their lives. We have some work to do. But January has been declared National Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month and in Iowa City, in Correville. Please reach out to us for education for your group, business, organization, church, hospital, school, and more. We thank those of you who have already taken this important step, and together, we can take even more steps. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to take a photograph?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Item number six, community comments. So we are going to adjust our community comment period this evening because we have several community members that wish to speak to us. So typically, our comment time is fifteen minutes, but tonight, I'm going to extend it to thirty minutes. In addition, speakers will have two minutes, and I do apologize that it's not a very long amount of time, but I want to make sure we can get through as many speakers as we can. And we have had some speakers that have been willing to yield their time. So we do have someone that would like to speak for a longer amount of time because they are, others are yielding the time for them, and that is perfectly fine. So I am willing to, absolutely willing to accommodate that. I will be keeping time, so I will put my hand up when you have thirty seconds left, and then you'll hear my phone when your time is up, okay? All right. So with that, I invite folks to come and speak with us. Please state your name, where you're from, and share your thoughts with us.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Yasir Abu Daga. I'm a resident of Correville, and I'm Palestinian-American originally from Gaza. I'm here to ask the council to call for permanent ceasefire in Gaza, expand access to humanitarian aid for the Palestinians, release all the hostages and captives, and in the military assistance and aid to the Israeli occupation regime. It's very important and urgent to add our voices to the overwhelming majority of Americans that they are calling for ceasefire. In the last three months, more than twenty-three thousand Palestinian civilians have been killed, and thousands more are missing and injured. Five percent of Gaza population have been killed or injured. If you scale it up to the U.S. population, that's more than fifteen million people. I'm outraged that my tax money is used by Israel to commit war crime against my people. In the last three months, Israeli forces have killed more than sixty of my family Just a couple of days ago, I received news about the killing of two of my, two more of my cousins in front of their homes, and the injury of my childhood friend by Israeli drone. They were just in front of their homes. According to an Israeli news magazine article titled "Israel's Factory of Mass Assassination", Israeli air force using AI to generate random targets with disregard to the civilians' lives. Even Mr. Biden has said that Israelis indiscriminately bombing Palestinians without regard to civilians' lives, and that amounts to war crimes. My siblings and their families were forced to leave their homes multiple times, more than four times actually, as there is no safe place in Gaza. They are now living in makeshift tents with no access to running water, electricity, or medical care, and just little amount of food that will keep them and their little children And that's not only my siblings. There's 2.2 million Palestinians that they are living in Gaza, that they are living in the same, under the same conditions. It's important for us here as Correville residents and as a council to be on the right side of history and add our voices to call for permanent ceasefire and into the historic injustice that has been inflicted on the Palestinians for the last seventy-five years, and that was intensified in the last three months. Your voices will help stop killing and suffering of civilians on both sides. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Who else would like to speak with us?
I'm Dani Masuk, a member of Jewish Voice for Peace Eastern Iowa and a Jewish community member. The Jewish people are a people of resilience. My great-grandparents were Holocaust survivors who did everything they could to protect their children. It kills me that Israel is doing the same in their name. Zionism is a political movement that Judaism predates by thousands of years, and it has become a violent colonial ideology. There is no justification that Judaism gives to Israel and the Israeli government for the genocide that they are perpetuating. Israel is using Judaism and those killed or traumatized by antisemitism as reasoning for their crimes. These are dangerous lies for both Jews and Palestinians. Why should the safety of my people come at the expense of an entire population? In no world will I allow this to happen in my name or framed as a Jewish value. To be for the liberation of Palestine is to know that colonialism has no place in our world. Jewish pain and trauma are not justifications for the pain and trauma of Palestinians. Anti-Zionists know that liberation is a collective fight. The safety and freedom of Palestinians and Jews around the world go hand in hand. The death of white supremacy and colonialism is needed for the death of antisemitism. They are linked. To say that anti-Zionism is antisemitism is to diminish the real pain Jewish people have experienced and continue to experience today. How is condemning occupation equal to the pogroms, Shoah, synagogue shootings, and hate crimes of our history and present day? White supremacy is the root cause of antisemitism. Iowans support our Palestinian friends, and we demand an end to mass killing and destruction. I urge you, as a city council, to approve this resolution with the proposed changes to make it clear Correville stands for human rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to address the council?
Good evening.
Yes.
My name is Rima Afifi. I'm a Palestinian-American and a resident of Iowa City. I'm also a public health academic by occupation. I'm focusing today on the health system in Gaza. International humanitarian law is explicit in its protection of healthcare infrastructure, including hospitals, medical staff, and ambulances, as well as the sick and wounded. Parties to a conflict must respect and preserve the function of healthcare establishments. With that in mind, I'd like to share reports about Israel's violation of international human law in its current war on Gaza with respect to healthcare infrastructure. The World Health Organization's surveillance system for attacks on healthcare has recorded six hundred and twenty-eight Israeli attacks on healthcare facilities between October seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, and today, January sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. This includes attacks on facilities, personnel, ambulances, patients, warehouses, and supplies. These attacks have resulted in six hundred and nineteen deaths and eight hundred and thirty-three injuries. These six hundred and twenty-eight attacks on healthcare infrastructure since October seventh were carried out in Gaza and the West Bank, a clear indication that Israel's war is not only on Hamas-controlled territories but on the broader healthcare infrastructure in Palestine. As of this morning, according to Dr. Rick Brennan, the regional emergency director of the World Health Organization's Eastern Mediterranean region, none of Gaza's thirty hospitals is fully functional anymore, and only half are partially functional. On December eleventh, Dr. Ben Thompson of the Union of Medical Care and Relief Organizations stated that two hundred and eighty-three healthcare workers and one hundred and thirty-three U.N. staff members had been killed in Gaza, the deadliest period in U.N. history, and that was over a month ago. He noted that key medical facilities in Gaza had been targeted, some with white phosphorus weapons, which international law dictates are never to be fired at or near civilian infrastructure. The targeting of medical facilities has been a deliberate strategy of the Israeli war on Gaza and more broadly Palestine. I urge this council to support the resolution with the proposed amendments to make clear that Correville stands in support of a permanent ceasefire and of international humanitarian law. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Who else would like to address us? All right.
Hello. My name is Audrey Messenger. I'm a congregant of the Agudas Arhim Synagogue and a resident of Iowa City. I'm a member of Eastern Iowa Jewish Voice for Peace and Iowa City Jews in Solidarity with Palestine. As an Ashkenazi Jew and a student of history, when I think about those who have been killed in the past four months in Gaza, I often think about empty shoes. Since October seventh, protests have called, protesters have called for a ceasefire by creating mass displays of empty shoes. These have happened in Dublin, London, Seoul, Washington, D.C., Rotterdam, and most recently in Amsterdam. Many of these demonstrations used exclusively children's shoes. For Ashkenazi people and others of European Jewish descent, this should be symbolic. It should mean something. In the Holocaust, when Jews and others were forced to enter the gas chambers, they were told to take off their shoes. This left mountains of shoes that were photographed after the war. The photos remain some of the most haunting reminders of the horrifying costs of genocide. Empty shoes haunt us because they remind us of the people that used to fill them, the people that were supposed to fill them. Each one of these shoes belonged to a person with their own unique perspective, their own thoughts, feelings, and their own dreams. Each pair of empty shoes represents a person, and each person represents their own individual world. In Gaza right now, with the death toll of over twenty-four thousand two hundred and eighty-five people and thousands of people buried under the rubble, we are losing these worlds at an unprecedented pace. They are irreplaceable. American Jews have ancestors who were victim to so many programs of violence. We understand the tragic effects of death and displacement, and we understand the importance of peace. Join us in calling for an immediate and permanent ceasefire with the proposed changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Who else would like to speak to us? All right. Stay tuned.
Hello.
Go for it.
My name is Osama Saban. I'm a longtime resident of Correville. I'm a Palestinian-American with family members still living in Palestine, actually in the West Bank, Gaza Strip, and in East Jerusalem, and also in Israel itself. I urge you to accept the amendments and not just the resolution as it's proposed as to say we're checking a box. This is simply the moral thing to do. And as Professor John Mearsheimer, the distinguished political science professor at the University of Chicago, stated very eloquently in an article published in December twenty twenty-three just a month ago, he said, "I don't believe that anything I say about what is happening in Gaza will affect the Israeli or American policy in that conflict, but I want to be on record that when historians look back on this moral calamity, they will see that some Americans were on the right side of history." So I urge you to accept those amendments, and that when you look your children, your grandchildren, in the eye and tell them when time comes, "I did the right thing," when that happens. And for that reason, I'm just going to read those amendments that we're proposing to that resolution and the rationale behind those amendments. So what we're proposing is to replace "Palestinian descent" with the word "Palestinian," and the reason behind that, that the phrase "Palestinian descent" discounts those residents who are themselves from Palestine. Better to refer simply to Palestinian residents, which is more inclusive. A second point would be to replace Gaza with the word Palestine, because that would include the violence that's taking place also in the West Bank, and that would be inclusive of everyone. It has not been mentioned that only, just since October seventh, about five hundred Palestinians have been killed by Israel in the West Bank itself. Those are not mentioned. Also, in the clause where it says "whereas," the copy that you have will be changed a little bit. It says "whereas the residents of Correville have." We're changing it to say "whereas a portion of Correville residents' federal taxes in the period from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and twenty-two contributed approximately two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars annually to the State of Israel and ten thousand eight hundred fifty-nine dollars to the West Bank and Gaza." And the rationale is that we wish to see the amount of local tax money being sent to the region as an educational aspect. It is important to highlight the role of local residents that they have in funding the ongoing military occupation. Just as we recognize that members of our communities are affected by this conflict, we must recognize the impact that our money has in perpetuating the conflict. Over ninety-nine percent of the money sent to Israel is in military aid, and none of that money is sent to Palestine is for military purposes. Also, the next clause where it says "whereas the city council," we're amending that, the one that you received, some of you at least received an email, we're adding also an additional word to that, where it says "whereas the city council supports the responsible and conscientious use of its residents' federal tax dollars that were designated for foreign aid do not support violations of international law by any party." And the rationale is we want to emphasize the importance of U.S. tax money is used ethically. This is especially important in the context of the ongoing trial in the International Court of Justice, which would directly implicate the U.S. under its own Arms Export Act, should Israel be found in violation of the Genocide Convention of the nineteen forty-eight. Also, adding the word "captives" alongside "hostages," and the rationale behind that is using hostages alone excludes more than eighty-six hundred Palestinian captives, of whom thirty-two ninety-one are held without charges, and of whom more than eight hundred and fifty are children under the age of sixteen. Palestinian captives are held in Israeli military detention, which regularly denies them due process and subjects them to torture and inhumane conditions. We're proposing to remove that the city council condemns all terrorist activities in the region and world, and the reason is condemning terrorism is fine. We have no objection to that. In this context, however, it is also politically loaded because both the U.S. and Israel both historically weaponized the definition of terrorism. It implies that blame of the crisis in Gaza rests with terrorist actions and not with restrictions on movement, expression, organization, or access to food and water. It also ignores the context of Israel's use, of Israel's current case in the U.N. court, where it stands accused of violating the nineteen forty-eight Genocide Convention. Next, we would like to add that the city council calls for an immediate and permanent bilateral ceasefire to prevent the further loss of innocent lives, as well as the release of all hostages and captives. And the rationale, there is already a "whereas" clause supporting both calls, so that it should be added under the "be it resolved" clauses as well. Next, we would like to add "and bigotry towards Palestinians, Arabs, and Israelis," and the rationale should be expanded to include discrimination on the basis of ethnicity and nationality as well as religion. Not all Arabs are Muslim, nor all Israelis are Jewish. In fact, I belong to both these groups. I am Arab, and I'm Christian, and I'm Israeli citizen, and I'm Arab, and I'm not Jewish. We'd like to add "justice and equal rights of all inhabitants of the region." This is consistent with all proposed political solutions, as well as with community values of equity and justice. And we would like to add that the city council affirms First Amendment rights of citizens to criticize government or government policy, and affirms that evidence-based criticism of governments in Israel and Palestine is not inherently antisemitic or anti-Arab. And the rationale is Judaism as a religion and culture predates the State of Israel. Judaism values life above all, so mass killing is against Jewish values. Equating Judaism and the State of Israel silences anti-Zionist Jewish voices by typing cultural and religious identity and political entity. And Zionism, as one of many political movements, it was the decimation of Jewish populations in the Holocaust that led to the widespread adoption of Zionism. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to note that I wanted to give him extra time so he could read through the amendments. So that's, yeah, absolutely. Who else would like to speak with us? Is there anyone else?
My name is Anne Saba. I am a longtime resident of Correville. I have a professional background in public health. I've also traveled to Israel and Palestine over the last two decades and lived there for several years working at a human rights organization alongside Palestinian Jewish and international human rights activists. Thank you for considering a ceasefire resolution today. There is a dire need for an immediate and permanent ceasefire, immediate sufficient and unconditional humanitarian aid to Gaza, and a commitment to U.S. laws that require that foreign military aid not be used in contravention of international law. I urge you to pass the resolution with proposed amendments. With the proposed amendments, this resolution is a step closer to the resolution that was drafted by diverse residents and passed by our sister city, Iowa City, and the growing number of cities around the U.S. who are taking grassroots action against the humanitarian catastrophe in Gaza. I believe we need a resolution that records for our city's history, a stance that is both peace and justice-centered. In Gaza, there is no place, safe place for any In Gaza, there is no place, safe place for any human, including the children who make up half of Gaza's population. On top of the overwhelming death toll from Israel's bombings and the forced massive displacement of the 2.2 million people on land that is smaller than Johnson County, a public health disaster is underway in Gaza, a destroyed health system, lack of food, water, life-saving medication, shelters, and protections from the harsh elements of winter. Although we are a relatively small city in Iowa, we are nonetheless globally connected. The human tragedies of this war causing immense suffering to Palestinians and Israelis, and aided by our tax dollars, are being felt in our community too, and our people in our community are hurting as well. Thank you for your time.
Hello. My name is Janana Abdaga, and I'm a 17-year-old Palestinian-American. In 2017, my grandmother, a type 1 diabetic, died due to lack of medical access in the Gaza Strip due to the blockade on Gaza. Today, my cousin Musla does not have access to insulin, another type 1 diabetic, due to the blockade. We are seeing Musla go through the same steps my grandmother did before she died. Musla is not the only Palestinian with lack of access to medical care. According to the HWO, around 800,000 Palestinians do not have access to medical care or any type of medical necessity. There are only nine running hospitals in Gaza and six working ambulances for a population of 2.3 million. If the carpet bombing in Gaza does not kill the Palestinians, the lack of medical access will. Especially now, since there is mass infectious disease spreading around the Gaza safe areas due to the mass population density. A ceasefire is the least we can do for the people of Gaza. I am calling for a ceasefire, then an immediate release of all hostages and captives, ending the siege on Gaza, and finally, ending the occupation of Palestine. I hope you can join me too.
Is there anyone else that would like to address us? Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Margaret Kiekefer. I live in Corralville, and I have been a resident here for over 40 years. My background is, I have been an ecumenical accompanier in Israel-Palestine, particularly during the 2002 Intifada. I was, and I have seen the devastation and the difficulties that Palestinians go through. And I advocate for this resolution because war is not a way to bring peace. That we need, it needs to be stopped. One of the things that I think the Americans are not aware of is the effect of their military, that the American military aid has on the situation there, that we are basically funding the war. And I don't think this is realized. And a lot of the problem is the fact, I've given you some information on this, that these are, this is a little bit outdated, but the information is still relevant to what's going on. And the fact that Israel is probably the third-largest armaments dealer in the world, and a lot of their armaments are purchased from the United States and resold to various groups. They could be guerrillas. They don't care who they sell it to, they're just making profits. And a lot of their, there's a lot of misuse of the things that we're sending them. So basically, by funding them, they're violating a number of different laws. The Simmington-Glen Amendment is being...
Sorry. You can finish your thought.
Okay. And there are just several different laws that are being violated according, because of the way that they're managing funds. Sorry.
That's okay. Who else would like to address us? Is there anyone else that would like to speak with us?
Hello. My name is Dima Tortar. I am an Iowa City resident. I am the co-founder of Iowa City Action for Palestine. And I just wanted to affirm that the amendments that were read by Osama Sabah have been circulated in several mailing lists that I have seen. There are over 100 people in our mailing list alone, and they are a culmination of the thoughts of over, if I had to venture a conservative guess, I would say 150 Iowa City and Corralville residents. So there's huge support for them. We have not heard any dissent on them so far. They have been circulated in Jewish groups, in Muslim groups, in Christian groups, in interfaith groups, and in secular groups. And I just wanted to give you an idea that this isn't, these don't come from one person or five people or 10 people. These have been seen by many, many residents of Iowa City and Corralville. And thank you so much for your time and deep consideration of this that's affecting us personally.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
All right. My name is Mohammed Ansari. I am an internal medicine physician at the University of Iowa Hospital. I didn't really prepare anything to say. It's just a couple of points that I had to make. I think a bunch of the folks here already mentioned or spoke about the humanitarian crisis, and in particular, the complete shutdown of the healthcare system in Gaza. I, you know, every day you come across new horrifying statistics. And one of them that I want to share with you today, that I just read today from Save the Children, says that more than 10 children a day lose their limbs in Gaza and need to undergo amputations without any painkilling medications. This is, this should move all of us. And I just want to say, or read one other thing about one of my colleagues, Dr. Abu Najela. He was a Palestinian human rights defender, a medical doctor, and he used to work for Doctors Without Borders. He was on the front lines, treating the wounded and the injured in the hospital. And on November 21st, 2023, he was killed in an Israeli airstrike on Al-Awda Hospital, along with two other doctors and human rights defenders. He was in the facility treating patients when the third and fourth floors were targeted, and the hospital was one of the last remaining partly-functional hospitals in northern Gaza. At the end of October, Dr. Najela wrote on a whiteboard, normally used for planning surgeries, the following. He said, "Whoever stays until the end will tell the story. We did what we could. Remember us, and we have to remember them. And I urge all people of conscience to support this resolution with the amendments that are proposed." Thank you.
Thank you. We have time for one more person? If there's one more person that would like to come up and speak with us?
Hello. My name is Anna Sofia Ramirez, and I am Guatemalan-American. One in three refugees in the world is Palestinian. One in three! They deserve to grow up and live in Palestine where they are from. I personally have been affected by imperialism, by colonization, by the Cold War, due to the United States' funding of the Cold War in my home country. The reason that there was genocide in my country in the 80s and the reason that we had a civil war was because of American and Israeli funding. I deserve to grow up in my home country in Guatemala. I didn't get to do that because of war, because of colonization, because of imperialism. Palestinians have the same exact right to grow up in their land safely. And currently, what is happening, it's not news to any of us, because this has been happening for over 100 days. And the number of Palestinians being refused, being, receiving refugee status because of what is happening now, I'm sure will only increase. I've only lived in Iowa for a few months. I recently moved here for school. And even though I've only been here for a little while, I still feel proud to tell people that I live in Iowa now, because I see so much hope in Iowa and in Iowa City and in Corralville. So supporting this resolution would mean so much to not only me, but to the Palestinian-Americans living here, to Jewish Voices for Peace, or Jewish people who want to support this resolution. I implore you to please support the Palestinians in this time, be on the right side of history. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you all very, very much. And before we move on, I do want to apologize that we do not have enough chairs in here. I hope that's something we can work on for the future. I do apologize for that. All right. So we will move on then to agenda item number seven. This is our statement for peace. Could I have that resolution read, please?
Resolution issued in statement in support of peace in Gaza and Israel. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by...
Oh, you need to second it. Can you say? Second.
Okay.
Seconded by when? Okay. So I'll start. First and foremost, I want to thank all of you for coming here this evening and sharing your stories, and thank you for coming here and being in the room to show your support. Just a few things, you know, that I want to say. When I heard that this was something that was going to be requested of us, there were a lot of things that went through my head. And the first one is that I felt municipal governments do not have, it's not within the scope of our duties and, you know, and what we are elected to do to weigh in on foreign policy and international policy. And I still feel that way. And I will tell you, I will tell you this. Since this has appeared on our agenda, the feedback that I have gotten, by about a five-to-one margin, five-to-one, that's probably a conservative estimate, is that we, why are you doing this? This is not Corralville's role to be weighing in on an international conflict. I've heard that multiple times, multiple times. But I feel that, while I do agree that that is really not what our, the scope, within the scope of what we are here to do, I do recognize the fact that international events do impact our community members, as we have heard this evening. And so I felt that it was important to honor the request in some way. And I will tell you that my first thought was to do a statement of support, where we would all sign on if we chose a statement of support. Because we also, this is sort of atypical, using the resolution process in this way. I'm not saying that it's never been done in Corralville. Maybe it has before my time as mayor, before my time on the council, but it's not typical. So that was my first initial thought. But I decided to honor the request for a resolution, because that was ultimately what was asked of us. And I know I have, you know, heard feedback that it was placed on the agenda very quickly, and, you know, some concerns about that. Those are valid concerns, valid. But I want to emphasize the fact that part of it was timing. We had just canceled the meeting because weather. I heard about the request before the agenda needed to go out for this meeting, and so I thought it would show that we were committed and that we didn't want to kick the can and that, you know, yes, we will do this. The other reason I decided to go with the resolution instead of a statement is because that would give, allow for amendments to be made. So that was another reason, that I did it that way. I also wanted to make sure that the resolution did have a local focus. Again, because I do believe that it's not really within the scope of what we do, you know, to weigh in on international policy and US foreign policy. You know, we all have our opinions, absolutely we do. But, you know, thinking about the scope of what we have the ability to do here within our body. So I wanted to make sure that we kept it focused on the community members that were experiencing the pain and torment from this conflict. I wanted to make sure we were affirming our commitment to peace, to condemning any type of bigotry or violence. And I also did want to make sure that we were being sensitive to folks that have additional opinions or different opinions, because I've heard those too. I've heard those too. And I just wanted to make sure that we were keeping it as a statement of, you know, we support everyone who has been impacted by this conflict. So I do, I do recognize that it's not enough for many. I also acknowledge that it might be too much for some. And again, the vast majority of the feedback that I've received is that we shouldn't be weighing in on it at all. But I did think it was important, because I do personally support an end to the conflict, a ceasefire, and want to see peace for everyone and safety for everyone in that region. So as far as the amendments go, I will leave that up to the voting members of the council, so the mayor does not vote on anything. My job is to set the agenda. But I will note that there are several of these amendments that I would be in favor of. Absolutely, the changing of the language about the Palestinian residents of Corralville, all of those, absolutely would support that. Would definitely support the condemnation of the antisemitism, Islamophobia, bigotry toward Palestinians, Arabs, and Israelis. The strengthening of the language for the immediate and permanent bilateral ceasefire. And there were some other ones too, but we, may I borrow yours? Hi. Thank you, because I don't think I have the same copy that you do. Yeah, I'm just looking at it. The, also, city council supports the overall goal of peace, justice, and equal rights for inhabitants of the region. So, you know, again, those are just a few that I would be in favor of. And as I said, I would leave it, I leave it up to the voting members of the council to decide which of these amendments we would like to adopt. Is there anyone else? What are some other thoughts? What are some other things that, thoughts people have or other discussion? Any other thoughts?
I know you took great pains to write this resolution, and I believe you brought in, I'm glad that you brought in the Adudis Akim congregation, which is located here in Corralville. I believe that the resolution as it stands, maybe with a couple changes in regard to Palestinian descent, instead just saying Palestinians, which was brought up today, I would vote for this tonight, if we could, as it is written.
Other thoughts? Go ahead. No, no, go ahead. Thank you. First of all, I would like to thank everyone who have taken...
First of all, I would like to thank everyone who have taken the time and the effort and put toward energy to work together to recommend amendment to the resolution that we have released on our agenda package. I would also like to thank Mayor Foster again for her care in taking the time to talk to each one of us and also talk to resident and listen to, to resident to see what is the need are in our community. We are one community. And so, when one of us hurt, the whole community hurt. We are in this together. We live here because we choose to live here. And we want anyone that choose to call Coralville home feel safe and welcome and protected within the community. And so, sometime, resolution and statement feel like just checking the box. And we certainly do not want to just check the box. We want to listen to what our resident have to say. We want to recognize the pain that is directly affecting some of our community member. I will never understand the pain that some of you are experiencing. And I will never understand the trauma in real time that some of our community member experience. What I can do is I can work with my colleague to come up with, whether it's a statement or a resolution, to send a message to our resident that we see you, we hear you, you are welcome here, you are one of us. And that is exactly what we are doing tonight. So, with that, I would like to propose...
I'm sorry, I think Rich would like to say a few words also.
Yes, I was just gonna propose the amendment.
Okay, gotcha. No problem. No, okay.
I'm sorry.
I got you. Yeah, no problem.
But thank you for the reminder. Sometime I get a little ahead of myself, so... I would like to propose that we accept the proposed amendment from our community member with some of the updated language, just like Osama proposed. I feel that it's valid because this is written by Palestinian resident who live through the trauma, through their family member, through their friends, through people that they call family. So, again, thank you for your time and your effort, and thank you for caring.
Okay. Rich?
Hi. I want to thank all of you for showing up and for those of you who spoke. I appreciate your comments. I've, I've read the documents and the emails previous to this meeting that pertain to this proposed amendment, ceasefire amendment. But I will tell you, I have serious philosophical concerns about this resolution and in fact, any similar type of, of resolution. As far as I know, none of us here are foreign policy experts, which should disqualify us from making any policy, taking any policy positions on events in other countries. I respect that we each have our own opinions about a lot of different things, and I respect that right, 100%. But I do not feel that it's appropriate for us as a city council, as a body, to take position statements or adopt resolutions about global events that are happening in other parts of, in other parts of the world and other countries. We have been elected to do what's in the best interest of the greater good of Coralville as a city, the greater good for residents of Coralville, for businesses of Coralville, and for Coralville's future. We're now being asked to consider a resolution pertaining to the conflicts in the Middle East. I sympathize with that. I know there have been many ceasefire agreements in the past, agreements that have been made that have been broken, and yet the conflicts continue. I acknowledge the events and the sufferings in that region, but I also want to acknowledge the events and the sufferings in other parts of the world, other regions. Now, the Middle East conflicts are the headliners of the news today, as they have been for the last few months. But what about the people in Ukraine? What about the events going there? What about Sudan? What about Nigeria? What about Somalia? What about all the other conflicts and the people that are suffering throughout the world and other parts of the, of this, of this, of our, of our world? From the beginning of time, there have been conflicts, there have been wars, there have been atrocities, there have been human sufferings that are primarily resulting from the differences of political beliefs, differences of religious beliefs, cultural differences, economic differences, combination of all of those elements. And we're all, every one of us are opposed to seeing pain and suffering of innocent people anywhere in the world, anywhere in the world. We have citizens and residents in the city of Coralville of many different nationalities, many different religions. I am personally not in favor of adopting any resolution that makes a reference to a specific group or a specific nationality or specific religions. Any such resolution like this could likely offend many other people, other groups. It's also, I believe, would set a precedent which I think would not be in the favor of, of this body. I like to think I'm a practical person, but I see no practical value in this type of resolution. And furthermore, I think it's not appropriate for us to consider or let alone adopt a resolution like this. It's with a clear conscience and a good conscience that I say I cannot support this resolution and I will not vote in favor of it.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or comments? From anyone?
Does that include comments already?
No. It's our turn now.
Dr. Knutson want to weigh in on the matter?
Oh, I'm sorry. We are not, we are, we are dialoguing, okay?
I would like to have Dr. Knutson at the conference.
Oh. He will speak if he...
Yeah, I'm happy to, I'm happy to do that.
And I just want to, just a, a level setting here. So, at this time, we're having our dialogue and our discussion, and we don't dialogue with the audience, okay? So, so right now, I, while I understand, I appreciate people want to share feedback and things like that, right now, it's, it's our time to, to discuss. So, just, just a little note there. Do you want to, do you have anything you would like to say, Mike?
Sure. I am overall sympathetic to, to the, the resolution and appalled by the horrific conditions in the Middle East. And would, would favor, you know, a, a lot of the changes like you just proposed, a lot of the changes that have been proposed, some of them, you know, with, related to wording. I don't know if it's easiest to try to do that now or wait a week and put it together because, you know, this is a little bit difficult to do with just a verbal amendment perhaps. Unlike Rich, I appreciate your thoughts, Rich, and you're, and I understand where you're coming from. I would suggest the key difference between this and, and some of these other horrific conflicts around the world is we're funding it. And, and, and that is something that bothers me a lot. And I'm supporter of the current president, but disagree with him on what we're doing, what's going on in, in our policy in this area. Do I think this is going to make a dramatic change in how, what, what happens? No, but I, I, I am not opposed to the symbolic nature of, of what they're asking us to do. And I would support, you know, the current, as written currently or with some modified changes that I think Lori suggested she would be okay with.
All right. Any other thoughts before we, and, and just to, to your point, Mike? We can make amendments this evening. We can just, we can make motions and we can, we are able to, we'll vote on the amendments first, and then, once we get the language settled, as we are, you know, voting through the amendments that are proposed, then we will adopt the amended resolution.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. So, with that, are there any other? I want to make sure there are no other thoughts or comments. Okay.
I would like to say I think Rich, his comments made a lot of sense also. So, I'm torn. I respect your choice to do a resolution, but probably would be for, prefer to not be involved in this. But if we do move forward, I will help to write the resolution.
Okay. So, you would, you would be, you would be willing to support an amended resolution?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, again, I am not a voting member of the council, so I would entertain a motion for some proposed amendments to our current resolution.
Motion to vote...
Amend.
To amend the current resolution.
Okay. And can you give me specific things that you would like to amend?
Second paragraph, whereas, you can have this one. Yeah, I, no, I have another copy.
Okay, thank you.
So, second paragraph, whereas there are Palestinian resident of the city of Coralville, take out the "are" Palestinian descent.
All right, noted.
Fourth paragraph, replace Gaza with Palestine. Fifth paragraph, same thing, replace Gaza with Palestine. Seventh paragraph, add, after hostages held, add, and captives. And then, after, now therefore, be it resolved.
I would nodding, okay, go ahead.
No, I think she's saying after that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, after that part, yep.
Um, so, after that, we, yep.
This one here? This one is...
So, that's the city council condemns...
Did you want this one?
Yeah, condemn, yeah, condemn all tabs. So, after number, we take out number one. Actually, I talked to a few resident and if it's okay, if we can keep number one but replace, that the city council condemn act of terrorism and genocide in the region and And then, from the current, from the current resolution, number two, we will keep that And then, for number three, we would add condemn antisemitism, take out the "and," put a comma, Islamophobia, comma, and bigotry toward Palestinians, Arabs, and Israeli in all forms. Yep, so I'm working down from the list, just so that Kevin can make notes.
Yeah, you bet.
And then, number four, on the original resolution, we keep that whole. Number five, so after, it's, it will say that the city council supports the overall goal of peace, comma, justice, comma, and equal rights for all inhabitants of the region. And number six, that the city council call for an immediate and permanent bilateral ceasefire to prevent the further loss of innocent lives as well as the release of our hostages and And number seven, that the city council condemns antisemitism, Islamophobia, and bigotry toward Palestinian, Arab, and Israeli in all forms. And number eight, that the city council affirm First Amendment rights of citizens to criticize government or government policy and affirm that the evidence-based criticism of governments in Israeli, in Israel and Palestine is not inherently antisemitic, antisemitic or anti-Arab. And I think that is all of the amendment proposed.
Okay. All right. So, we have a motion on these amendments. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Okay. So...
Can I say that's just too much for me?
Okay, too much?
Too, yeah, I would end with the fifth.
Which one?
Number five, that the city council supports the overall goal of peace in the region. And that would be a finish for me. I wouldn't add all those.
Okay. Well, let's vote on the amendments that I proposed, and then we can, we can go back, okay?
Those are amend, I would...
So, we have to vote on hers first?
I would vote no.
Okay.
I mean, I'm just saying, yeah.
Okay. So, could we get a roll call on the proposed amendments, please? Knutson?
Discussion?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. You want to keep, yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Isn't that process?
I did that.
Go ahead. Yeah. You okay?
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go back to my original statement about I'm philosophically opposed to an amendment, or to a resolution of this type. It's focused on one region of the world. It's focusing on primarily one people. And I'm not, I don't want to be a contrarian, but what I'm trying to do is look at this more globally. This is affect, wars and sufferings affect a lot of people across the world, not just in the Middle East. I'm also concerned a little bit about, or a little bit about the rest of the residents in Coralville that we're not hearing from. And I'm also concerned about setting a precedent, which I am absolutely not in favor of doing it.
Understood.
I hear you again.
Okay. You have any thoughts?
I appreciate that.
Okay. All right. So, are we ready to vote on the proposed amendments? Could I get a roll call on the proposed amendments by Councilmember Quinn?
Knutson?
Hi.
Vogelzang?
Nay.
Quinn?
Aye.
Goodrich?
And nay.
Okay. So, we have a tie, 'cause we're missing a council member.
You have to have a majority. Doesn't pass. You have to have a majority of the, since it's a motion, not a resolution, you have to have a majority, you still need three votes either way.
Okay.
So.
Okay. So, the proposed amendments for the resolution, the amendments proposed by Councilmember Quinn do not pass. Would you, I would entertain a motion to go back and, and have another go at making amendments. Could I get a motion for that?
So, move.
Could I get a second?
Second.
Okay.
Lori, would you like, Council Goodrich, would you like to propose amendment?
I would, I would like to go back to what the original was that ended with number five. I agree with all the changes that you made until number five. Do you know what I'm saying here?
So, you are comfortable with updating some of the language and terminology?
Yes, those were updates, correct, yeah.
The updates of the language and terminology?
Yeah.
Is what you're referring to?
Yes.
But the rest?
Mm-hmm.
I'll second that.
And I really do appreciate what Rich Vogelzang is saying also. So, I'm not super comfortable with, with this, because I do take that worldview also.
Okay. All right. So, to be clear, is there any other, your, your, your motion is for the updated language and renaming, can you be a little bit more specific, changing Palestinian?
Yes, the Palestinian, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yep.
Okay. And then, you would vote, or your motion is to keep the original resolution?
Correct.
Okay. So, that is, that is your motion. Any other discussion on that? Any other thoughts or discussion?
Just on the amendment or in general?
Just what, on what she is proposing and?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I appreciate your thought, Lori and Rich. As a human being, we all have opinion on any issue. But when we sit here on, on this, on this chair, we are representing our community member. They elected us here to represent them. And sometime, our opinion do not meet, and that's okay. That's okay. My job here is to let the community member, let my resident that I represent, know that I hear them, I hear each and every one of them, regardless of how different our point of view are. And I don't feel that if we were to pass this resolution tonight, we are going to set precedent for anything in the future. If any other group, if any other community member group were to come to us and ask for support in the form of a state, a statement or a resolution, we would do the same. We would do the same. We would seek out and talk to the community member. We would do our research, and we would debate, just like this. So, I don't think that if this resolution's passed tonight, it is going to set precedent for future. I also agree with Rich that why we are a body of govern here in the city of Corville, we don't have, we are not an expert on foreign policy. But I do agree with Council Knutson that no policy affect us directly, in one way or another. So, why this is a symbolic gesture, it is a gesture that say that we are a community, and we hear you, and we listen to you, and we want your voice to be heard. And if you ask us to add more detail into the resolution, we need to reconsider.
Okay. Other thoughts? And just a reminder, the current motion is to amend the original resolution with the updated terminology, and, and that would be it.
Correct.
Correct, okay. So, that is what we're discussing. Are there any other thoughts on that? Do you have thoughts, Mike?
I think I'm okay with what Lori's proposing.
With Lori's proposal as well?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other thoughts? Comments? Rich, do you have anything else you wanna add?
I think I've said my piece.
Okay. All right. Are we comfortable voting on the motion to amend with the updated language? Comfortable, are we ready to vote on that? Do you have anything else you'd like to say?
Hey, just, just a question about procedure.
Sure.
If we pass with the proposed amendment from Council Goodrich, and our community member is not happy about it, what would happen then?
Well, I mean, it would, it would pass, it would stand, you know, and I would just say that I understand that, that there would be frustration, that, you know, it doesn't go as far as some hoped, but I would, we would just accept those, those changes and those amendments as they are. Usually, so it would pass with the updated language, and then the, the rest of the original resolution. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I just wish that we have more time to talk to people. I just wish that we have, you know, because.
Yeah, well, and I, I just would say that, you know, we're, we're not gonna come up with, this, this has been the, I will say that this has been the, the whole conundrum, at least, you know, I, for me in particular, but, you know, just as in, as some, the person that is charged with setting the agenda and, and bringing, you know, that is my, my role in this, is to bring the agenda, or bring the item to the agenda. And I have to say, I have heard so much, so many differing opinions and differing feelings about this. And I, I will just state again, just so that folks understand, the vast, the vast majority of the feedback I've already gotten is that we shouldn't be touching it in the first place. But like you, I agree, I feel like this is, it's an international issue, but it does have local impact, as we have heard, as we have heard the local impact. So, it was important to me to, to put it on, to show that we were serious about it, we weren't kicking the can. But I understand that, you know, that it'll be disappointing. But there are some that are disappointed that we're even having this conversation, you know, that are, that, so I have come to a place where I understand that we are not going to satisfy everyone with whatever we come up with. I mean, the amendments that we have talked about, those would make some folks upset too. So, I think, you know, that's, that's where I stand, is that it's, it's gonna be, it's very hard to get something that's gonna make everybody happy.
I've, I've honestly, very honestly, have, I've really struggled with this. I've lost sleep over this. I've talked to a number of people, said, why are you just doing, why would you want to do something that is just symbolic, purely symbolic, with no real teeth? It really holds, holds no water, other than just to make a, a statement. You know, and, and this language references, talks about, in your amended amendments here, you ask, or suggested, references Palestinian residents in the city of Corville. Well, I go back to what I said earlier, there are many nationalities, residents of many nationalities, residents in, in city Corville. Are we representing all residents by, by doing something like this? I don't think so.
Yeah. And, and sometimes, you know, we need to, to keep the focus on the, the issue at hand and the, and the request. I, you know, obviously, I agree with you that, you know, we have folks from all over the world, there are conflicts happening all over the world, but this is, this is what is before us, and this was what was requested of us by the, by the community.
I'm, I'm grateful that you all came and, and that we were able to hear your stories and know what is happening in people's lives here in Corville. So, it's been very enlightening for me.
I think, Rich, if I may, I think the question that you ask is that why are we doing this symbolic gesture? What, what, really, what, what does it offer to our community? What does it do? I think what it does is, it's saying that we are standing in solidarity with the people. I think that's what it does.
Any other, and you have more? Any other comments?
Sorry, question of procedure again. So, I won't be able to add. So, would you, would you just have to vote? So, we just have to vote on what Councilmember Goodrich proposed first.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Can she?
Correct.
If you wanna add something to that, I would have the, this amendment stand by itself, have a vote, and then if you wanna further amendment, you can bring something up, but.
Okay.
So, even if it were to pass as it, with, with the updated language, as it's currently written, we could offer another amendment?
You could offer another, I mean, you could offer another amendment.
And we'd vote on it.
Question on the resolution itself, but I would do the, I would do this amendment first, see if it passes, and then if there are other amendments, we can entertain those at that time.
Okay. All right. So, let's do that. So, the amendment, Lori, can we, just because it's been a few minutes since we've discussed, what is your, your motion to amend? Again, just to refresh.
I'd like to make an emotion that we use the mayor's original resolution with the changes of using the terminology that was suggested, Palestinians instead of Palestinian residents.
And then the other?
And there were a couple other things too. I don't think I need to, do I need to restate those?
If I had it right from before, we have to change Gaza, Palestine, and hostages and captives.
Yes.
Acts of, so number one, I'm a little, I would leave a number one in as is under your amendment?
Palestinian residents of the city of Corville, which one?
No, I mean, under the.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I think it, I think it would be helpful if Council Goodrich could go through the number and, and read the amendment that she would like to propose. I think it would make Kevin's job easier, and so we can all hear.
Well, I, I think we're just to the point that the council condemns all terrorist activity in the really region and world. And the proposal that was submitted was that the city council hereby condemns all types of violence that lead to the loss of innocent civilian lives in Israel and Gaza. And that sounds fine to me. We will use the submitted amendment for number one.
So, Kevin, can you read what?
So, I gotta make sure I have the.
Does that, here, I could pass this down, that number one, yeah.
Okay. So, after the, after the resolved language out of the, out of the.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, are you, you, your number one is the city council hereby condemns all types of violence that lead to the loss of innocent civilian lives in Israel and Gaza. Is that correct?
Yes.
No, that's not in the original one.
That's, yeah.
The original one.
That's number two.
Yeah.
Correct.
And number one, the city council condemns all terrorist activity in the region and world, what do you wanna do with that?
We could omit that and just make their four, theirs four.
So, then, this one that I just read would be one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then, you're okay with accepting the two, the three, and the four that are on here then?
And, yes, correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Everybody follow that?
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Is there more, Lori?
That would be it, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. So, that is the motion. And we have a second on that? We did have a second, it was Mike.
Mike, yes.
Yeah? Okay. So, are we ready to vote on Lori's proposed amendments?
You're ready, yes.
Okay. All right. Roll call, please.
Vogelzang?
Nay.
Quinn?
Aye.
Goodrich?
Aye.
Knutson?
Aye.
So, the amendments pass. Three, two, one. So, that updated language does, does pass. Okay. Are there any other amendments that folks would like to add?
What do you got, hi? You got anymore? Sounding like you were.
I just have two things. I think from the, from, from our community member, there is a, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, no, six. So, after number six, after number seven, there was a propose of whereas a portion of Corville resident federal taxes in the period from 2017 to 2020, you know, 2020, 22, contributed approximately $233,000 annually to the state of Israel, and $10,859 to the West Bank and Gaza. And the next one is whereas the city council supports the responsible and conscientious use of its residents' federal tax dollars that where desired for foreign aid do not support violence of international law by any party. I would just like to say that I appreciate community member listening to our concern when it comes to educating the general public in amending the language, and understanding that we directly do not have the power to send aid anywhere. We, we don't, you know, as, as, as a body of government, government, we don't do any of that. We don't have a budget line that directly support the war that is going on in Gaza.
All right. Do you have any other amendments you would like to propose? Anyone? Does anyone have any other amendments? No one? Mike, do you have any?
No.
Okay. Mike, do you have any other amendments you'd like to propose?
Thank you, ma'am.
Lori? Okay. So, are we ready to vote on the?
Can we get a second for her after you read your amendments? I think we need a second.
For, I don't think, I think she, you were just making a comment, right, hi?
Were you trying, were you, you were making a comment, or you were amending to put the language back in?
You, you asked, you asked whether, you know, I would like to amend anything.
So, did you wanna put that in?
Would it be possible?
We can vote on?
Yeah, you can vote.
Yeah, you make, you make a motion.
I just wanna make sure I understood, so that's what you're taking.
Same, same, I agree. Yeah, absolutely. If you wanna vote on that, you're, you're okay with? If you wanna vote on that, you're, you're okay with putting that in?
I, I'm not, 'cause I'm not...
Okay.
Supportive, I'm not, don't have firsthand knowledge of these numbers. The concept that we're using tax dollars and that the US is supporting...
Madam Mayor, could we have a second first before we get into this?
Sure, oh, sure, yes.
Thank you.
So that is the amendment, could we get a second?
Yes.
It's hard to give a second.
Yes, could we get a second?
No.
Okay, all right. Can we get a second for that one? Okay. So we don't have a second for that one?
I just wanna, so that would, that wouldn't be...
It would fail.
Yep.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Anything else before we vote? Any other amendments? Any other comments? I do wanna thank everybody, I wanna, I really wanna thank everybody that brought us these amendments. Thank you, thank you, thank you. You know, just as I said, I, my personal feeling is that I would've, I agreed with the changes that you had originally intended, and, you know, but it's, I, as I said, my job is to bring it to the agenda, and, so. Are we comfortable voting with the changes and on the amended ordinance that we have? Any, any other final thoughts?
I wanna thank you and everybody as well, I haven't had that opportunity for, for working with them and, uh, all your advocacy. I would, I would suggest that this is a very small step, but if the, uh, you know, if it gets extrapolated around the country, it, it could impact our federal leaders.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's, I'm sure, their goal.
Yeah, and I do think...
Which I support.
Yeah, and I, I, I just would say that I do believe in symbolic gestures, you know, I, I, I do, I do believe in symbolic gestures, and yes, I know that this is not gonna have, you know, any impact in the general sense, other than to affirm that, you know, we, we support the community members and our community members, and that we, you know, a lot of the comments you made, hi, that we, we are standing with you and we, we support you in this. Okay? And I, I do think that's important. I, we've heard, we've heard how, we literally heard how this is impacting people, and I do think it's important that we, we do this. Okay, so, could I get?
So, what we have on the table right now...
Yeah, well, let's, let's clarify that, let's clean that up. What do we have on the table?
The original resolution with, uh, Councilmember Goodrich's amendment that we discussed, and so that's what the resolution, if you wanna vote on the resolution, that is, that is what you'd be voting on now.
Okay. Is everybody clear on that?
Yep.
Okay. Could I get a motion to approve the amended resolution with the changes we just discussed? Could I get a motion for that?
So moved.
Moved by Knutson, could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Huen, okay. Any final thoughts? Do the roll call, please.
Huen.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Nay.
The amended resolution passes with three ayes and one nay. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, everyone. And again, I, I do wanna apologize about the lack of chairs, and I hope that we can get some more chairs in here for when we have a lot of community members come and see us. Okay. All right. Moving on. Item number eight, we have our, the second consideration of our hate crime, crimes ordinance. This ordinance will allow for hate crime enhancements pursuant to city ordinance. This ordinance mirrors ordinances passed by Iowa City and North Liberty, except like all Corleville ordinances, it does not mandate jail sentences for prosecution of simple misdemeanor offenses. All right, could I have the ordinance read, please?
Ordinance number 2024-1001, an ordinance amending chapter 41 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Corvoo regarding violation of individual rights hate crimes. This ordinance introduced for second consideration by Councilmember Vogel Zhang, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. All right, any questions or discussion on this item? All right. Roll call, please.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Ordinance passes its second consideration, all ayes.
I would just like to make a mention that...
Oh, oh, yes.
Our crowd that was just here would probably have been interested in this, being it brings it home to Corleville.
Sure.
It, it does relate.
Yeah.
Sure does.
Yeah. Okay. So, we had our roll call, right? I'm sorry, I'm a little bit...
I interrupted you.
Okay, roll call. All right. And it passed. Ordinance passes its second consideration, all ayes, with Peterson absent. Number nine, Iowa River Landing License Agreement. This three-year license agreement is for 201 East Ninth Street, Suite 101, starting on January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2025, and this space would be used as an onsite property management office. Could I have the resolution read?
Resolution approving a license agreement with Watts Group Rentals LLC. Resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Huen, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Knutson. Any questions or comments on this item?
January 1st, 2023?
Oh, I didn't even notice that!
Actually, not, they're gonna go back and...
Oh, for real?
Yeah.
What's that?
They're gonna pay from 23 on...
Oh, they haven't been paying yet.
Well, we had to get it done, too, so. This is, I mean, this is part of their agreement.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about this a long time ago. This is, this is the fuzzy space, right?
This is part, you know, this was carved out of the fuzzy spot before the...
Right, right, right.
Before the...
And they've been in there since, probably since that time. They just haven't been paying for it?
We just have to get that paid for, and it will be, that's why we had that date.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 11, underwater search and recovery operations...
Madam Mayor, we have number 10.
What's that?
Number 10.
Oh, 10, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm getting messy, I'm getting messy up here.
You do not wanna miss this.
No, I'm not in a hurry, I'm just, yes. Okay, number 10, bio solids land application agreement. This is for a five-year agreement compensating the contractor for the land application of bio solids for the, from the wastewater treatment facility. Could I have the resolution, please?
Resolution approving an agreement with Nutraject Systems, Inc., for bio solid removal and land application for the Corvoo wastewater department. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Huen. Questions or comments? All right, roll call, please.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 11, underwater search and recovery operations 28E agreement. This 28E agreement outlines the responsibilities of cooperating jurisdictions in Johnson and Lynn Counties for undercover search and recovery operations. Could I get the resolution, please?
Resolution approving and amended and restated 28E agreement between Johnson County, Iowa, Iowa City, Corvoo, Iowa, North Liberty, Iowa, Cedar Rapids, Iowa, Johnson County Emergency Management Agency, City of University of Heights, and University of Iowa for the joint provision of underwater search and recovery operations in, in the cooperating jurisdictions. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any questions or comments? Do we, we, we do some of this training here in Corleville, right? At the, out, out at the fire...
This is the, this is the...
But the dive training?
This is the dive training.
Yeah, don't we do that here, and we have the pond, I believe we do?
I have no idea.
The pond?
The pond, that, you know, where the fire, the, uh, the training thing. Uh, no, it's just, it's a, it's, it's a really great, uh, a really great, uh, program, and glad to see that, you know, we are continuing this 28E, so. Any other comments?
How long is this, sorry? How long is this agreement? Kevin, is it, uh, like annually, or is it...
It's just, if I, Chief Caron, this just, uh, rolls itself over until, I mean, this was originally, if you look at the resolution, it was from 2015, and I think just made some changes, and then, people can, there's termination language in there to do that, so, we don't come back and pass this every year, it's only when there's changes that need to be made.
Great. I just didn't see a date or a time on here, so, that's why I asked. Thank you.
Yep.
The dive team's been in place for decades.
Yeah.
I did some training with them back in the early 80s.
Okay.
In farm ponds.
Okay, yeah, a lot of visibility there.
Any other questions or comments? All right, roll call, please.
Huen.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Number 12, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Madam Mayor, I would like to ask council to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, A to double A.
Okay, moved by Huen, can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. All right, could I have the roll call, please?
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Huen.
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved, all ayes. Number 13, city administrators' report.
Um, the other thing, Mayor, I just remind people that we have the Winter Fest this weekend from 9:00 to noon in the Iowa River Landing.
Awesome. All right, thank you very much. Um, mayor's report, I don't have a lot this evening, I do just wanna, again, thank everybody that came and spoke with us this evening, really appreciate all of your work as well as we discussed this issue and, and, and got something passed. Like I said, I know it's not gonna please everybody, but I'm proud that we took the step to, to consider this and to, to ultimately pass it. In addition to Winter Fest, uh, that was one of the comments I was going to make, that is a, a really fun event, would really encourage folks to, to come and attend that. I also wanted to say thank you to the city staff that were involved in the Martin Luther King Jr. activities yesterday, there were some great activities at the rec center, and my favorite thing is the reading of the I Have a Dream speech, where we have different community members reading different sections of Dr. King's famous speech, and it takes place at the library. We had done it a few years ago, it had stopped, and then we brought it back, and it was absolutely beautiful, so, thank you to everyone that participated in that and everyone that attended that event. And that is all I have. City attorneys' report?
Now, since we had our first snowstorm, I'll use, I'll use this to remind people, like, of a couple snow removal items you require by ordinance to have your sidewalks cleared within 24 hours after a snow event. Obviously, we had a large snow event, they have not been going out, but the, the staff will have to go out pretty soon because the city is, make, the city and the residents can be sued if somebody falls on a sidewalk that's not cleared, so, it is your responsibility to make sure that your sidewalk is, uh, free from snow and ice. And second of all, on top of that, with all the snow we had, I would wanna remind people again that you cannot take your snow and push it across the street, or push it onto some, push it across the street, uh, that just causes problems in this, in the street you're on, and it also causes a problem with our, you know, we need, uh, our streets crews need places to put the snow, and adding, you know, taking snow off people's driveways and everything is not, it's not a, uh, it's not legal, and, uh, you could get cited for that, and it causes, you know, problems with the street, uh, snow removal services. So I wanted to remind residents of those two things.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much, those are, those are very good reminders. Okay. Committee and council members' report, we'll start down at this end with Councilmember Knutson.
Um, thank you, Madam Mayor, very little, just, uh, thank city staff, since you brought up snow, I've been working hard to keep, keep up as best they've could, I think they've done a pretty good job. I got out several times over the weekend and was impressed with the roads, and wanna thank all who've helped out with that, that's all I got.
Excellent. Okay, Councilmember Vogel Zhang.
Well, I, um, feel it's an honor and a privilege to, to be in this chair. Um, I told my wife, uh, she knows where I'll be at least two nights a week, uh, or two nights a month, I'm sorry, um, but, no, it's, I consider it an honor and a privilege to be here, and, um, I look forward to, um, doing what I can, uh, I feel humbled to be here, but, um, also, regarding the, the snow issues, um, I wanna remind everybody, if they got a fire hydrant, uh, close to their house, close in their neighborhood, get it cleared out, so, firefighters can, uh, can get to it if they need to, so, that's all.
Thank you.
Just know the meetings aren't always this easy.
It's all downhill from here.
Councilmember Huen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I would just like to say that, you know, I really appreciate the discussion that we have and how respectful of us to one another, um, in order to have a, um, very productive, you know, um, we, we, again, we have different view, but we can respectfully discuss, though, so I appreciate that a lot. And thank you to city staff for keeping the city going with the snowstorm that we have, and then also for the MLK Day celebration. Um, it was cold, but we got a good crowd that come to the rec center and help paint the mural and enjoy some goodies, and then also make their way, um, later to the library to enjoy some stuff, so, um, thank you.
All right. Excellent.
Thank yous have been made, and I wanna congratulate you again, Megan, for being mayor, and Rich for, uh, joining us on city council. Um, I also wanted to, I just, you know, it's not, it's, uh, the streets crew have done a great job, it's the police, uh, there's been many accidents and many cars that won't start, or tires that burst and all that stuff, the police have, uh, just been out there working overtime, water department, sometimes there's water breaks and things like that, there's just so many services, and even at the rec center and the library, it was a place for people to go when their, uh, maybe their houses weren't so warm, or the kids needed a place to be. Um, we continue, then, with Winter Fest, and I just wanna mention, Kelly's said it already, but, um, about Winter Fest, and there's so many fun things planned, but it might be pretty cold, and in that case, there's many indoor, um, opportunities, too, uh, throughout the IRL, so, pull that up on, on the website and just look at the list of all the fun things, even, you know, you can go out a little bit, and then you can go in and warm up, and, um, it's a great morning sat, this coming Saturday morning for, uh, families, individuals, young and old, to be, um, in our community, and then, uh, it's called Gimme Pizza and Wings, are, will be open soon at the Brown Deer Golf Course. So, check that out. Thank you.
How soon?
Soon.
When the course opens?
Wednesday, I think it's opening Wednesday.
I didn't hear anything about that.
Excellent. All right. Well, if there is nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Moved by Huen, could I get a second?